Okay, good evening, everyone. Let's call tonight's meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin tonight with public audience. Uh, Mike? I'm sorry, Mike Long behind you. Call on you next.
Right to order. Russell.
Good evening. I had forgotten that this was such a penultimate... No, it's not the penultimate meeting of this board. It is the ultimate meeting of this board. I want to thank you all for your service and those that are here coming back, great. Those of you who have served and aren't coming back, I understand that as well and thank you very much for your service. Mike Long, 8 Aaron's Way. I don't participate regularly in these public sessions because from my observation, they often end with a rant or two of misinformation. But I'm here tonight because at your November 13th meeting, I was a personal victim of a serial commentator who falsely called me a liar. Now, I've been called many things in my more than forty-five years of voluntary service in Simsbury, but liar is not one of them. I'm not going to go through the rant item by item because it serves no valid purpose, but I do want to give you my own personal opinion of her message that night, which needlessly and falsely attacked not only me, but also our police chief and other members of the Simsbury Police Commission. I found the following regarding the message she delivered while requesting you to ask us to resign our positions on the Simsbury Police Commission. There were at least seven totally inaccurate misstatements passed off as facts. Things she cited were mixed up from our October 15th and November 5th meetings to be able to create her own narrative. Through the misstatement of facts, rearrangement of details, and innuendo, Simsbury's serial commentator seems to have taken a page from what is happening in Washington these days and is creating her own fake news. I recommend you, and those who will replace you who are leaving, to listen to whatever she says at your own risk. And bear in mind, whenever she reports on things and gratuitously and even maliciously insults people by name just for the heck of it. I also have something else I'd like to say tonight, first selectman. I'd like to briefly tell you about a special police commission meeting held earlier today. The Simsbury Police Commission unanimously, with one absenteeism... Excuse me, with one abstention by a brand-new member to the board... What a heck of a time to be a brand-new member to that board. ...voted to extend a full vote of confidence to Police Chief Bolter and really to the entire police force. We have an ex... Thank you. We have an exceptional police chief who is now under attack primarily from a disgruntled former employee. There are more serious labor management issues under review, but please, I think we should all have comfort that there will be an active police force in Simsbury. It will be serving the public and serving all of us, as they always have, with honor and gallantry, and that you can be confident that the town is well-protected and under good guidance. It'll take some time, but we will get there, and you can all be proud of the police force you have here in Simsbury. Do you have any questions? Any none? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike Long.
Good evening. Woodham McNiven, August Road. I'm here tonight for Simsbury Community Television. I first volunteered to be a cameraman for SCTV in 2005. I specifically requested to cover the Board of Selectmen meetings because as a concerned resident and a voter, I wanted to be informed. In 2005, Tom Vincent was the first selectman, and in all the years since, including three more first selectmen, I've personally covered ninety percent or better of every Board of Selectmen meeting for SCTV. In 2012, I joined the Board of Directors for SCTV and accepted the chairman position for the Ways and Means Committee, not because I had any background in fundraising; in fact, I had none. But one thing I learned in my twenty-two years as an officer in the United States Navy was always volunteer for the hardest job. And raising the additional revenue SCTV needs over and above our primary sources of funding has been a hard job, but historically SCTV always did manage to end the year in the black. 2019, however, is shaping up to be the first year where our operating expenses will probably exceed our revenues. We have reached a tipping point. The writing is on the wall. Unless something changes, our annual net losses going forward are only going to increase. This is not sustainable and does not bode well for the future of SCTV. So why is SCTV at this precarious and tipping-point position? Our primary source of revenue comes from the cable companies. For every cable TV subscriber in Simsbury, the cable companies have to pay a mandated amount to SCTV. But this revenue source is steadily eroding as more cable TV subscribers cancel these services and switch over to streaming services like Netflix instead. Our second-largest source of revenue comes from the annual contributions by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education. We depend on these contributions, and we are very grateful for them. However, the level of these contributions has not changed over the past ten years, and yet SCTV's operating expenses, just like any business entity, has been creeping up every year. Payroll in particular is our biggest expense line item. We need to grant annual payroll increases to roughly match the annual rate of inflation. Our annual increases in operating expenses amount to around four percent. Our next-largest source of revenue comes from donations made by Simsbury residents, and for those of you who have already donated to our 2019 fundraiser, I thank all of you. These generous individuals get it. They understand that should SCTV cease to operate, then Simsbury would lose its only real source of comprehensive news that is independent and objective in its coverage of Simsbury's governing bodies, its educational system, and a whole lot more. So I'm here tonight to make four appeals to you, two of which you have direct control of, and two more of which you have substantial influence. My first appeal, I respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen double the amount of its annual contribution to SCTV in the next fiscal year. My second appeal is to each of you as individuals who just so happen to serve on the Board of Selectmen and who I sincerely hope value SCTV. For if this is indeed the case, then I would really like to see a one-hundred percent participation rate by board members in contributing to our 2019 fundraiser. My third appeal is that you, as a board and individual members, encourage a one-hundred percent participation rate to all the members of these following boards and commissions that SCTV provides coverage of: Board of Education, Board of Finance, Planning Commission, Zoning Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Members on each of these boards, you included, all received one of our mailers, the color version of this, on or about October 25th. As of today, the contribution participation response rate for members of all six boards stands at a mere sixteen percent. In contrast, the contribution participation and response rate from the entire mailing stands at near twenty-five percent. I believe we will realize thirty percent or better before the year ends. But at this point in time, I'd really hope for a far higher contribution participation rate for members of all the boards and commissions for the simple reason that SCTV covers all the meetings of these boards and commissions, providing a valuable service to each of these governing bodies and their respective members, as well as to the residents of Simsbury. This is something I would think all board and commission members would be more cognizant of than anyone else. My fourth appeal is that the Board of Selectmen highly encourage the Board of Education to also double its annual contribution to SCTV in the next fiscal year. And to finish up, I can assure you, I am not here holding out my hand expecting government to solve all our financial challenges. We at SCTV are actively formulating new ways to generate additional revenue to help cover our future operating expenses, but we do need your help as part of this process. Please support SCTV. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paulus would like to speak. Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Wickham Drive. Recently, I filed a Freedom of Information request for all the police interview tapes conducted by Chief Bolter in conjunction with an internal investigation. All the police interview tapes I received are presently on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and news feed on Facebook. After reviewing the tapes, it appears that Chief Bolter was fixated on his concern that Sergeant Trumbly had taped a conversation that Chief Bolter said he wanted certain officers gone that went viral throughout the police department. Many of the police officers interviewed stated that they had heard rumors about the conversation that Chief Bolter wanted some officers gone. Chief Bolter attributed these rumors to Sergeant Trumbly and was trying through his interrogation of the officers to find someone who was aware of the tape of the chief's conversation that would verify the conversation. However, according to testimony, nobody had seen a tape recording of the conversation, and Sergeant Trumbly continually denied a recording but did take notes of police activity. Chief Bolter was so fixated on the need to find the tape with what he called malicious gossip. When nobody could testify that they saw tapes, he arbitrarily decided he had to terminate Sergeant Trumbly for unverifiable charges in a perjury trap. As the rumors continued and Chief Bolter escalated his search and searching, looking for a crime that didn't exist, arbitrarily disciplining some officers while others were allowed to have a momentary lapse, leading to low morale and no confidence in the chief. Sergeant Trumbly will eventually return to work, which will be another black mark on the management style of Chief Bolter. The only remedy is to have Chief Bolter resign, as it will be almost impossible to manage a department that will continue to have a target on their back, leading to our offices working under stressful conditions. Chief Bolter was the police commission's choice, although there were more qualified officers that would have applied for the job. It is alleged that Commissioner Mike Long spread malicious rumors about an officer that was thinking of applying and did not. The selection process was flawed from the beginning since it alleged that Chief Bolter was chosen before the selection process began. The no-confidence vote on Chief Bolter cannot be overcome through training and rehabilitation. Another Freedom of Information request through the town was the zoning enforcement officer's salary payments. It appears that Janelle Mullen, a past Mansfield employee, filed her last timesheet on 8/18/19 to 8/24/19. However, it appears in the information I received, Janelle Mullen received full pay on 8/25 to 8/31 when she worked only one full day. One day, full pay for 9/1/97 when she didn't work, and 9/8/914 when she received full pay and did not work. Janelle Mullen quit 8/26. Is there an explanation for these discrepancies? Recently, The Hartford Current had a story on the Democratic first selectman in Simsbury picks Republican deputy. This is an unprecedented decision since past practice was the selectman with the highest vote was given the position of deputy first selectman. It has always been past practice for the newly-elected board to vote on the deputy. Shaun Ascom did not receive the highest votes and should not be in contention for deputy. First selectman Eric Wellman has gone rogue with power and has positioned himself to become Town Manager Capriola's sidekick. Shaun Ascom has now made the ultimate coup by caring more about stoking his ego than playing with the rules and tradition. On a number of occasions, Shaun Ascom has had conversations with town staff that was inconsistent with his responsibilities under the town charter. The new Board of Selectmen should demand that Shaun Ascom's appointment as deputy selectman be withdrawn and have the new board vote for their choice. Under the direction of Town Manager Maria Capriola, taxpayers have paid for the labor attorneys to have numerous meetings on the termination of Assistant Town Planner. My Freedom of Information request for the complete internal investigation leading to Robin Newton's termination was denied his attorney-client privilege. Town Manager Maria Capriola prides herself on transparency, but with this investigation, she hides attorney-client privilege because it won't give the public the narrative that will show there was no reason for Robin Newton's termination. Robin will eventually get her job back because the reason for the termination was determined by alleged false statements and unethical behavior. With low morale in Town Hall under the management of Town Manager Maria Capriola, it might be time for town staff to follow the lead of the police department and vote no confidence in Town Manager Maria Capriola. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and news feed on Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Sure. Anyone else? Yes.
Hello, and thank you for your time. My name is Michael Yankee. I reside at 626 First Avenue, New York, New York. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the town, even though I'm not a resident. Tonight, Ms. Coe has continued her recent trend of using this forum to make false and disparaging remarks regarding Janelle Mullen in relation to Ms. Mullen's tenure as zoning enforcement officer in the town of Simsbury. In addition to tonight's inaccurate and incomplete remarks, Ms. Coe made several false claims against Ms. Mullen during the public access portion of the October 28th Board of Selectmen meeting. It appears that every one of Ms. Coe's inaccurate and unwarranted remarks targeted at Ms. Mullen were based on the complaint filed by Robin Newton against Town Manager Maria Capriola on August 27th, 2019. On August 31st, 2019, the Board of Selectmen released the results of an investigation of Ms. Newton's complaint. The results of that investigation documented that every single one of Ms. Newton's complaints and by association Ms. Coe's accusations and remarks in the October 28th meeting involving Ms. Mullen was false and completely without merit. I will not dignify Ms. Coe's comments by repeating them tonight, but I will take this opportunity to read several excerpts from Attorney Smith's report, which are relevant to the false statements, which would be just about every statement, actually. Ms. Coe made regarding Ms. Mullen at the Board of Selectmen meeting on October 28th. From Attorney Smith's report, "On October 27th, 2019, Town Employee Robin Newton sent a letter to Eric Gomes and the Board of Selectmen in which she made various allegations regarding the objectivity of the Town Manager and the Human Resources Coordinator. The Board asked the town's legal counsel to investigate Ms. Newton's allegations. Upon investigation, Ms. Newton's allegations could not be substantiated." Anytime I read Ms. Newton, you can feel free to substitute Ms. Coe. Attorney Elizabeth Smith interviewed Ms. Newton and several others regarding the allegations of Ms. Newton's letter. In her review, Ms. Newton could not provide any detailed information to support her allegations. For example, when asked for the basis of her claim that Ms. Mullen was somehow protected by Ms. Capriola and that Ms. Capriola provided Ms. Mullen with assurances and privileges during the hiring process, Ms. Newton only identified the following information: A) After securing an agreement from the union president, the town offered Ms. Mullen three weeks of vacation, as opposed to two weeks, which is standard, and a starting salary of step four, as opposed to step one. And B) Ms. Mullen allegedly was promised one and a half hours to go for runs, one and a half hour lunches to go for runs, as well as other flex time. Ms. Newton further claimed that Ms. Mullen often took long lunches, but she could not estimate how many times Ms. Mullen had done so. Neither allegation was found to have any merit. Ms. Capriola did not sit on either the first or second round of interview panels. Both panels independently selected Ms. Mullen as the top candidate for the position. Second, Union President Mike Wallace confirmed in an April 6th, 2019 email to Ms. Newton and Mr. Gomes that he had agreed to allow the town to offer three weeks of vacation as a recruiting tool to attract desirable candidates, and had done so with four other candidates before Ms. Mullen's hire. Similarly, with the union president's knowledge and consent, candidates with work experience have been hired as a step greater than one. Given Ms. Mullen's prior experience, the union president approved of her being hired at a step four. Accordingly, Ms. Mullen was not given any special privileges. She was treated in a manner consistent with the town's past practices. For a little background, this is outside the report. Ms. Mullen has a BS from UConn, a master's in urban planning from the University of Southern California, several years of experience in various roles in the City of Los Angeles Planning Department, and four years' experience as zoning enforcement officer and assistant town planner in the town of Mansfield, obviously qualified above step one. Back to the report. Individually, Mike Glidden confirmed that the reason why Ms. Mullen occasionally took extended lunches or used flex time was because the finance office told her after her first week of employment that she could not exceed thirty-five hours of work per week. Since Ms. Mullen frequently had to attend evening meetings, she was required to take longer lunches or flex time to stay within a thirty-five-hour period. Ms. Capriola played no role in this decision. Ms. Newton's claim that Ms. Mullen improperly spent time with Ms. Capriola outside of the office and has private lunches with her during the workday and texts her on an almost daily basis are also unsupported. When asked how often Ms. Mullen and Ms. Capriola had private lunches together, Ms. Newton said she could not recall, but stated that Ms. Capriola and Ms. Mullen had dined together at Metro B's... Metro B, I apologize if I got it wrong. ...on several occasions. To the contrary, both Ms. Capriola and Ms. Mullen indicated that they had just one lunch together at Metro B's. Ms. Mullen recalled only one other occasion when they dined together while she worked in the town of Simsbury.
About thirty more seconds?
Okay. I would continue to go through this, but I'll just jump to the end here because the rest of the fabrications, there's no sense revisiting. But you'd think out to here in terms of without merit, neither allegation has merit, also unsupported. Ms. Mullen was not given special privileges. Ms. Newton's allegations could not be sustained. Then Ms. Coe would back off, but she has not. I have to admit that I have not studied the town guidelines for the public audience portion of this meeting, but I have to imagine that the public audience portion is not intended to use as a platform for people to carry out their personal agendas or to air false allegations against other individuals in an attempt to ruin their reputations. Since the fast notes seem to have deterred Ms. Coe from attacking Ms. Mullen, I ask that the board cut Ms. Coe short if she continues to use this forum to do exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kalashman.
Mr. First Selectman, through you, what right does this fellow have to come before this board and make charges against citizens of Simsbury when he's from...
Everyone?
He's from New York, and this board hasn't voted to accept him to speak or not. He just came. It should be... This board should decide whether or not, not being a resident of Simsbury, whether or not he'll be allowed the courtesy to address the board. Point of order. Not my time. Point of order. Are we ready to get my statement?
Give your name and address.
Okay, fine. Fine, I don't think a trial should be held in this chamber. What I'm here for is to more or less thank the candidates that also ran in the election, and I appreciate that they ran and they have my backing, and however, didn't do much good in the election. And congratulations to the victors, to the first selectmen, and to the people that will retain their seat, and to the new elected selectwoman and my colleague, Ms. Cook. Now, having said that, what I came here for is the Second Amendment of the Constitution. And I don't think I should have to go through it and read it to you, but they thought it important enough not only to have it in the Second Amendment, but also to include it in the Bill of Rights. And to back, though we don't need his backing, to back it up, I have a letter from my president, and it's dated November 19th, and I'm not going to read the entire letter. Some of it is personal. But I am going to read, "Over the eight years before I took office, the Second Amendment was under continuous attack from policies that made it difficult or impossible for law-abiding citizens to purchase firearms. I have already begun to reserve this dangerous trend, and I continue to work to ensure that your government is abiding by the Second Amendment and does not infringe on your rights. We took our first step to restore Second Amendment in February 2017, when I signed legislation nullifying an international rule service, IRS rule, that would have allowed the IRS to conduct mental health investigations of Social Security recipients and turn their names over to the National Instant Criminal Background Check System. In addition to the administrative steps, I look forward to working with Congress to pass laws that will protect the Second Amendment." And I just wanted to share that with you, and I feel it's your responsibility, though many people may say, "Oh, they're only on a local level," but things in our government start from the local and go up, not from the top and go down. And I think it's important that you, as representatives of the town, including our manager, ensure that people are protected with their Second Amendment rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah.
All right, we're going to lighten things up a little.
Thank you.
Vanna Brett is with us, and so just a reminder to everybody in the audience, to the Board of Selectmen, and to everybody watching at SCTV, this Friday...
Bring the mic down so they can hear you.
That is so mean. Bring the mic down. This Friday and Saturday is Black Friday and Small Business Saturday, and so it's a great time to promote and recognize our Simsbury businesses and at the same time get a little something for yourself. So just a reminder that you should have all received your beautiful mailer that went out to all the businesses and to the residents in Simsbury, and we have a bunch of restaurants, jewelers, neckers, which is our only toy store, and the only toy store in the area. So for every fifty-dollar gift card that you purchase on Friday and Saturday, you will get a ten-dollar bonus. That's number one, and it's at a great time. We sold over thirty-three thousand dollars' worth of gift cards for our two days last year. It gets the businesses some cash during a much-needed fourth quarter, and it supports them as we go through this really critical fourth quarter. If you want to see the businesses in Simsbury stay around next year, this is a great way to promote them and to get a little something back. We also like to do a no-purchase-necessary. Thank you, Vanna. So our no-purchase-necessary is, check out all of the amazing businesses in Simsbury. We have a ton of businesses that participate. You stop in, you don't have to purchase anything, just say hello, they will give you a sticker when you've finished... When you've gotten eight stickers, you're going to leave it at the last business, and there's a list of amazing prizes that you can win. Okay? So again, no purchase necessary, just to shop around. So this is an endeavor that is jointly by the Simsbury Main Street Partnership with the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce. We get a grant to do this from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, so there's no cost to the business community. And again, I think it's just a really nice time to support them, to remind them that they're important, and like I said, you get a bonus. So please make sure that you go out, shop over these next two days, Friday and Saturday, and then end with Simsbury Celebrates, which I'm on the planning committee. The weather looks fantastic. We've been working really hard, and you know, come out. It's an amazing, amazing free event, so we hope to see you then. Excuse me. We hope to see you then, too. Thank you.
Thank you both. Anybody else for public audience tonight? Okay.
Oh. No, no, I'm buying a chainsaw.
I have a leaf blower and a chainsaw that I bought from Melissa over the years at Small Business Saturday. My wife would like to know why I have to buy another one.
You can shop at my house Sunday. How's that?
So I'll keep it light as well. Kevin Beal, 12 Hampton Circle. Just want to say a quick thing, and that's thank you. On behalf of the Simsbury Republican Party, I'm Kevin Beal. Again, I'm the chairman of the Republicans. Want to say thank you to Cheryl Cook for all that she does and continues to do for the town of Simsbury. There's a lot that's happening in front of the camera right now, but there's a lot that we don't see that happens behind the scenes, too, and so we owe a debt of gratitude to that. So thank you for carrying our banner and being our leader, and thank you also, as a parent of small daughters, for being the example of leadership and grace and something that they can aspire to be. that they can aspire to be. So thank you to Cheryl.
That is a nice segue to the next part of our meeting, but I did want to see if anyone else wants to speak in public audience before I move on from that part of the agenda. Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to, you know, begin the part of our meeting where we recognize two outgoing board members. And I know people in this room are well aware of Cheryl's accomplishments, but this is more, this is just a partial list for the people at home, and this is a partial list. Cheryl served on the Board of Selectmen since 2013. She chairs Community for Care, chairs the Simsbury's 350th Celebration Committee. You are actively engaged with the Aging and Disability Commission as their liaison, Commissioner on the Simsbury Housing Authority, previously served on the Personnel Subcommittee, currently serve on the Retirement Plan Subcommittee, member of the Economic Development Work Group, championed issues of diversity and inclusion, and a regular volunteer at Cheese Day. That's accurate, right?
One of my favorites.
Good, good. And I think one of the things that I'm personally most appreciative of, of your leadership, is how you have been a voice for members of our community who often need a voice. So thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to open it up to other members.
So Cheryl, you and I came onto the board in 2013. I really didn't know you as a person until we started our slog around town, but quickly realized you are quite a classy gal, and I mean that as a compliment, and consider you a friend, and Eric mentioned a number of different groups that you're part of, but more than that, you are just invested in the community, and you have made us a better community, and for that, thank you. Thanks, kiddo.
My turn? Yeah. Cheryl, I've really come to enjoy your friendship and your guidance on this board. You know, a lot of the folks, as Eric and Luke do, don't get to see all the work that you do, and while I can't go into detail, particularly around executive session, I can tell you that this town is losing a substantial asset, not only from her passion and her drive, but also her intellect and her way of looking at challenges and problems. Regularly convinced us to go down a different path because we were on the wrong road, really understands contracts, legal challenges, complex problems that I'm sorely going to miss and this community will miss, so I've really appreciated your advice in that space. Also, a lot of fun to spend time with you at varying events. You do seem to know everybody in the community, and I fully expect you to hold us accountable from the back row with your counterpart there, Mr. Kelly.
Chris, I have a plan.
Go easy on the happy hour before you come in to see us, but I hope you won't go far because this, this community certainly has benefited for the last six years plus from your direct service, and it would be a substantial loss for you not to be able to continue to contribute. Additionally, for the folks for Wendy and Jackie, big shoes to fill for both these folks. I know your folks are up to it, but we're losing two substantial contributors to this community, so.
Thank you.
Eric, so. You don't have to go, it's okay. Cheryl, I think Cheryl got stuck with me in the end here two years ago, and she's had an immense impact on my short two years in the board, and I look at her as a very honest mentor, whether it's pinching my knee to say, shut up, you gotta stop talking, or to say, do you know who that is over there, or to help me turn my computer on, who is going to turn my computer on? But I think, I just want to go a little bit deeper about something that you guys have already said, and that is, when you look across the board, you look at, you know, you look across all the boards and commissions around people who are involved in this town, and everybody in this room I hear is here for various reasons, because you're passionate about somebody here or an agenda item or a commission or an event that's important to you. Cheryl has directly, her actions have directly impacted human beings in this community, which is something that not all of us can say. I cannot say that at all. Most of the things that I do are from a bigger perspective that I've been involved with to this point, and I hope that I get to the point one day that my participation on this board is in a capacity where I can change somebody's life, and you have changed people's life. And this town is better with you when you are engaged than when you are not, so please stay engaged.
Thank you.
So always wanting the last word. I think all of this is very articulate, but Cheryl, as I step off this board, one of the absolute gifts of my experience is your kinship and getting to know you, and to know that I'll have that friendship for the rest of my life.
I'm with you.
And as others have said, your intellectual independence was very clear and very important in decision-making with this board. As Eric said, you are just an absolute advocate for people who need advocacy, but I will also add that you are a person who doesn't just show up, you actually, in between meetings, do a significant amount of work, and I do believe that there is a huge hole that is left on this board with you departing. It's been an absolute pleasure to serve with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm with you.
When we were thinking about something to leave with you, there was one building in particular that I think you have had, your service has had a particularly meaningful impact on, so maybe you can, guess what?
Oh, thank you.
Victorino Hall.
That's just terrific, and I'm never going to be able to say 10 words here, but I want to thank you all for the honor of serving with you, because you have made this a meaningful experience, and I feel every time we sit here that there is something important going on, and that's because of all of you and all of us working together, and that's the most important thing. And as I leave you, I know you're going to continue to do that, and Chris, your contribution to not only this board, but all of the committees that we've served on together, has been too big for words. Your passion for bringing organization and bringing clarity to a problem has been something that has moved all of those groups forward, and I personally am going to miss this, and I hope that I will be with you again on another committee, where we can have, we can continue to have an impact, because your contribution is important and continues to be important, and I will never, never regret any of our service together with all of you, and I will miss you, I will. Thank you.
So this is the official stuff, Cheryl, that we have to do, so I would make a motion to effective November 25, 2019, to congratulate Selectman Cheryl Cook, excuse me, Selectwoman Cheryl Cook, my apologies, on her tenure on the Board of Selectmen since 2013. Further move to express the board's gratitude to Ms. Cook for her service to her community. Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
My husband Brad is here, and he's put up with me for doing all of this for years and years, and, you know, he's a big part of why I get to do what I do, so, thanks, honey.
So we turn now to Chris Kelly, who has served not continuously, but started his
service on the Board of Selectmen in 1983. You were re-elected in 1989, where you served three subsequent terms, served on the Board of Education from 2006 to 2015, and then from 2015 to the present on the Board of Selectmen all that time as deputy. Again, just a sample of some of the committees you've served on, Personnel Subcommittee, Retirement Plan Subcommittee, Liaison to the Board of Education, numerous workgroups, including the Water Shortage Ordinance. You were one of the leaders in the.
You proud of that one?
Always.
I'll get you a plaque for that one.
Chris was a leader in helping us in the transition to a town manager form of government, and there are too many things that I have appreciated over the past two years of having you at my right-hand side, but the biggest is, if I don't, if I don't know what to do, I call Chris. He's the voice of reason, and I think one of the most powerful things about your leadership is that when you talk, people listen, and I've really appreciated you being at my side these past two years.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you. Sean, thank you for the, I was daydreaming for a second, I apologize, I was getting scolded by Chris on something in the back of my mind. Chris, I, you know, I ran into you yesterday morning at the bagel shop when your dad was with you, and, you know, I thought there is no better time than that point to share with you, especially with your father there, how, you know, how important you've been to my onboarding on this committee, and again, the, when Eric talks about 1983, my goodness gracious, how many years of service and contribution, that is just phenomenal, and we talk about public service, and that is, that's, that's, that's almost a badge maybe, right there, all those years on there. You're, you're very tempered, moderate, and approach to governance is been, is an inspiration for us all. We were at a meeting most recently, and that was very impassioned, and there were probably 12 people speaking, and at the very end, it was Chris's time to speak, and for the last, everything that was said for the hour prior went out the window, and Chris summed it up in 130 words or less, and that's what your leadership has always been like, and again, as with Cheryl, this town is better with you involved, please don't leave the board, or whatever it may be, continue on. Thank you so much.
Thank you for our statistics.
So Chris, I knew you a little bit from your first tenure on the board and was aware of you at the Board of Ed, and really got to know you over the last five years or so, four, five years. We have not always been on the same side of an issue, but I have grown to appreciate having those discussions, and thoughtful discussions about points of view and perspective and everything else, and the challenge will be to those that follow in your footsteps to bring that discussion forward, because I do think that this board does a great job of stating our opinion, having a passionate discussion, and then almost setting it aside, and then doing what we think is best for the town of Simsbury, and I do know that to be exceptional. I've worked in a number of other towns, and some of the stuff I see pales in comparison to what we do on a regular basis, and you're a big part of that, so I want to thank you very much, and sorry I couldn't support you on the water ordinance, but it was still good. It was a great discussion.
That's okay, Mike, because Cheryl's an independent thinker, so. So I get the last word on this one. Chris came on during my tenure at a very tumultuous time in town, one of, one of our worst from the Board of Selectmen standpoint, a lot of, a lot of people, a lot of distrust, probably one of, I would argue, one of the most pivotal moments for a board in a long time, could have gone a lot of different directions. And the fact that the six of us are up here laughing with each other, joking around with each other, having fun, interacting with you folks, is entirely due to the way Chris Kelly approaches this and his family. Chris came in here with no axe to grind, with no agenda, he came in here to serve despite what had happened, or perspective and otherwise, and just hit the ground focused on you, focused on the citizens, focused on the taxpayers, not worried about the politics, not worried about the vote counts, not worried about all the other nonsense that people get wrapped up in. Taught me a ton in those five years, and I wouldn't still be here if it wasn't for Chris Kelly. He's made this fun for me, he's made this an enjoyable Monday night, to be away from my family every other week is a big commitment for a lot of folks. But my sparring partner and I have enjoyed going back and forth on things like water ordinances and otherwise, and we give each other a hard time about it, but when the moment is serious and when the decision's on the line, everybody's right, Chris Kelly's voice comes in, and we may not go with Chris's exact decision or point of view, but he shapes the conversation and gets us to a point where we do make a better decision for this community, and for that, I'm always going to be thankful, Chris, so thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I know you said some words.
I know, I did. Well, Chris and I are going to come back and haunt you guys, so I'm sure we'll both have more to say later.
We need the chief and the lieutenant here when they do come back.
Chris, there is another building, set of buildings, that are really important to you, and I think you're going to know what I'm talking about.
I think I will. We're going to name one after you, but we figured.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great. Thank you so much.
That's great.
Appreciate it.
Now, these are real, you know, for anyone who grew up in Simsbury, tobacco fields are a real touchstone, so thank you very much. I appreciate all of your comments very much. It's been an absolute inspiration. Democracy is individuals pursuing their own inspiration, and I just have to tell you, the 14 current years, so inspired by both the Board of Ed staff and town staff, we're just day in and day out, you see people who are absolutely committed to the mission of serving the community, but more important than that, just bring an incredible passion for continuous improvement. I'm just astounded, as a businessperson, how often I walk into a Board of Ed building or a town building and see people working so hard to make things much better, and then also just the inspiration of seeing just people in town come forward with something that they care about, from something incredibly small to something incredibly huge, and just pursue it, you know, like a salmon going upstream, it's just incredible to see that each and every night. And then finally, the inspiration of people on boards and commissions who just night in and night out pursue something that they have an incredible passion for. And I really do believe, you know, the comments that we are a unique team, the absolute last reason that almost held me here for another term was that this team is simply that good. The sum of the whole is absolutely greater than the sum of the parts, and there is a synergy and a camaraderie that is, you know, very unique in life. So I leave with complete admiration for each and every one of you, and I know that going forward that you guys will be doing a great town, a great service on behalf of the town. So good luck and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we get to go now, right?
I got a few more opinions to get.
Now we get to say what we really mean.
For the official part, is I will move effective November 25, 2019, to congratulate Deputy First Selectman Chris Kelly on his tenure on the Board of Selectmen from 1989 through 1995, as well as most recently from 2015 to present, and further to express the board's gratitude to Mr. Kelly for his service to our community. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're going to, I don't know how to do this transition, so I'm just going to.
This is probably everybody gets up and walks out.
Yeah, probably. We have another presentation now on the Public Safety Radio System update, so I will turn it over. So, I will turn it over to you.
Sorry, totally different feel, coming up. So, the lieutenant and I just wanted to provide an update on this project. The last she heard from us was actually from our consultant that was here back in January to review other results of their study. And they had presented two options at that point. So, we wanted to just kind of recap why we're doing this project, what we've worked on to date, including that, the study that was conducted by our consultant, our Phase 1 study. But since that time, we've also looked at two additional options for the communication system moving forward, one of which is the state communication system, which is now open for municipalities to join. So, we wanted to do our due diligence and look at that system. We also looked at the Simsbury Fire District system because they do have their own communication system. So, we looked into that as well. So, we're going to do a high-level overview of all four of those options, a summary of the costs, estimated costs associated with each of them, and then kind of talk about next steps. Sound good? So, just as a reminder, the radio system that we currently have is used by the Police Department, the Department of Public Works, Board of Education, and then also the Ambulance Association. And we do have interoperability with the Fire District as well. We started looking at the system because it's over 20 years old. Most of the components are at the end of their useful lives. They're no longer supported, or they will reach end of useful life in the next few years. In addition, the system does frequently experience some coverage and interference issues specifically in particular parts of town. So, as you'll remember, in fiscal year 19, we had funds for a consultant to evaluate our existing system and offer two recommendations for moving forward, which we'll touch on briefly. For the current fiscal year, fiscal year 20, we do have funds budgeted to do the next phase, Phase 2, which would be the full RFP for the system replacement. We have not spent those funds yet. As I mentioned, we wanted to make sure we had explored all of our options before we determine which path we were going to move down. So, just as a reminder, back in January, Federal Engineering, who was our consultant that we selected through a competitive bid process, they were here to present to you the study that they conducted of our existing system. And they presented two options to you all at that point. The first was a standalone system, so a complete replacement of our existing system. And that system would have us using our existing frequencies, meaning we would not have to go to the FCC for new licenses. It would also have us using our existing sites, plus adding one site at the Fire Town, Fire Station. And the estimated capital costs associated with that option were about 2.55 million. The second option that they presented was a shared system with the town of Avon, who was also looking at replacing their system. That would have us moving on to a different frequencies in order to be compatible with them. So, that would be a change. We would use two of our existing sites that we use now, plus two sites that are currently in Avon. And the estimated costs associated with that option are about 2.98 million. As I said, we, from there, looked into two additional options, and I'll let Fred walk through those two for you.
So, one of the options we looked at was the state of Connecticut system. Federal Engineering's recommendation included us exploring that option because it could save the town and taxpayers some money. The system is coordinated through the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, which is a division of the statewide emergency telecommunications. Participating agencies as of right now are Coventry, Stonington, Groton, Norwich, and Torrington Fire, and Bloomfield will be going to that system very shortly. The town would have to go into a, a town in state would enter into a five-year MOU, which is renewable for four additional five-year terms, and we would have a maintenance contract with Motorola. The 700 system, for those of you who don't know, we currently are on a 400 system. So, it would be a complete change to go to a 700 system, and which could affect some operability with the Fire Department. But if we went to a 700 system, we would use two or three of our existing sites, plus the state's three sites. The estimated cost for this is about $2.6 million. Fourth option we explored was utilizing the Simsbury Fire District system. This system is already in operation. It's already a proven system that we know works. It's also a system that has already been paid for by the taxpayers of Simsbury. We would just be utilizing their core system to help increase our system. This would integrate Public Safety, Department of Public Works, Board of Ed, Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance, and the Police Department. We would continue to use our 400 system, and we use three of the existing sites, plus a Fire District site on Talcott Mountain Road. We would have a redundancy in dispatch, Fire Department, and if we have the current same system, if something should happen at one of our sites, we can unplug our system, go into the Fire Department, or they come to the Police Department, plug it in, and we can dispatch through both sites. The estimated cost for this is 1.1 million. And then the next slide, we put off four together to show you.
Hold on. You moved? A second. That's outstanding.
That's great. Thank you, guys.
Yes, so this, we just wanted to, again, these are estimates, but these are the estimated capital costs, as well as the maintenance costs for the first few years associated with each option. Maintenance costs would be included in year one, so that's why it's showing two to five.
So, you could see the total cost for five years without the Ambulance Association. Standalone is 2.7, shared with Avon's 3.1, the state system is 2.5, and sharing the Fire District 1.2. That's a huge savings.
So, I do have a question.
Yep.
Any challenges for the Fire District? If we did share that system, any change in their communication level?
We've worked with the Fire District, and Kevin's here, if I misspeak, but we've already, you know, already spoke to the Fire District, already spoke to a radio vendor. Seems like it will work perfectly.
What is the difference in capability between the 400 system and the 700 system? I mean, this is something that we should be-
Just a different frequency.
So, there's no difference in the quality, the communications, or?
We currently have our 400 system licensing. To go to a 700 system, we would have to get all new license with the 700 system. My recommendation would be to still keep our 400, because a 400 is very hard to get a license for now. There's very little left with the FCC.
I remember from your first presentation, probably last year during budget time, there was some concern about the gaps in coverage. And is that going to be sufficient to cover that, or?
What's nice about the Fire District, it's a proven system that we know doesn't have the gaps. So, I'm not too concerned as far as that goes. It's a proven system. With the other three options, we wouldn't know until we have the system up and running. And then we'd have to say, okay, what do we need to add on to it? With the Fire District system, we already know it's working because they've been using it for, how many years, Kevin?
Since 2015.
Since 2015. And they've already, I'd say this, have gone through all the bumps already with all the issues and fixed them, and it's actually, it's a bonus for us because we know what they have already done.
So, I think the last time we had the presentation was by the consultant, right? So, the, I'm not leading the witness here, which I'm favoring, but if you go back to the last one, the Fire District shared, so quick, so chief maybe to you. How, so it's future-proof till when? Would you, it's future-proof till when? How long, how long is your system good for until we look at yours again, essentially, which would be you looking at the Police Department at the same time?
The technology changes, you know, as you know, every day. But at this point, we're looking at probably a 10-year cycle, 15-year cycle for the equipment. What we like to do is we like to replace equipment prior to it blowing up. So-
The Fire Department's very good at that.
Well, we're going to replace maybe, you know, a transmitter, one every three to four years, and just keep the replacement cycle going. Technology will improve, the software will improve, the updates will improve. With this system that we currently use, we get yearly updates to update the software within the hardware. So, it's not like the old days where you used to have a box, and that was it. What you had is what you had. There's constant improvements going on, just like the computer in your house.
So, if we, so if we, a couple more questions then. Thank you. So, we'll use just 10 for illustration purposes. The other methodologies that were up there, I don't remember what the consultant said, what would those be on a cycle?
All these systems have between 10 and 15-year licenses.
So, we're going to look at this in-
We're just well beyond our current system right now, by about six, seven years.
So, then if we're, if we're, if we're shared or in tandem together with the Fire District, then it would be potential shared cost again in 10 years, which is a benefit, I would imagine, us not taking it on. And so, what is the unknown then? If the consultant came in here and said, the reason why you don't do that is what, potentially? Or there may not be, what?
I can't think of any. I mean, the-
I think the only thing that I can say right now, and I think that the lieutenant's already looking forward in the program, if this is to go into fruition, is the areas to make sure that we're able to talk to all the surrounding areas. And part of that package is to migrate some of the equipment, and I'm saying individual radios, to the 700, because that's what other departments are going to in certain cases, because they think that that's going to be the best thing for us, or for everybody. They will have to, we're going to have to buy 700 radios, a few at a time, in the future, so that we are able to communicate with the Bloomfields and the East Grammys and the Avons when they shoot over to it. So, it'll be a migration period, but this gives us a planning period where we're using hard, workable operations that we know have worked for four years. And quite frankly, the only problem that we had with our system to date was on two, two times where the state's equipment failed. And it was their fiber optic cable that just went out, and we were unable to communicate for a short period of time. But we fixed that. We're now on our own microwave link, so we took that out of the motion. So, to answer your question, there is a bit of a migration also to 700, and it'll be included with all our hardware. The Abtech system that we currently have plug-and-play, as Lieutenant spoke about in dispatch, is all glass. It's all computerized. You just buy a new PC when that one goes in two years, or replace the PC. It's a software event. So, it's not the hardware push buttons anymore. It's not the spring loaded. It's all gone. It's all just button CRTs.
Within the Fire District's program, I'm assuming you can create your own groups, for lack of a better term, which makes it very nice where you don't have everybody talking over each other. And I think it's pretty much a no-brainer where we should go.
When we looked at the systems, we went to a 700 system. Part of the problem would be is we can't talk to the Fire Department. They don't have the capability of talking to a 700 system right now. Neither does the ambulance, Public Works, Board of Ed. If we go to a 400 system, part of our, part of this quote for our budget is for the Police Department's radio system, our portable's and our car radios, we can change over to the 700 system to talk to Bloomfield, the Avon, whoever else may go to that system. So, we have the capability of speaking on our 400 and our 700 with no added, really expenses to Fire Department. So, that was built into this price, and as you can see, the price is much less.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are there any, is there any state or federal money towards these projects at all?
No.
Well, hi, Sean.
Just thank you. This is outstanding. This is another example, I think, of the professionalism that the Police Department, the Town Manager's Office, Fire District bring to this community, that I really appreciate you guys digging deep, thinking thoughtfully about, before just pressing ahead with the RFP and going down the road. And it would've been fine to go down that $2.5 million road, because that was the information at the time, but stopping again and making sure that that was the best solution. So, this is, once again, another beautiful example of the professionalism you guys all bring. So, thank you for that.
Thank you all.
I really would just like to publicly thank the lieutenant and Melissa for their outstanding work on this project. As you all know, we have a lot of pressure on our capital budget in the upcoming years. And to be able to save the community over $1 million is really just amazing. So, very, very good work. And also to Kevin and his team for being willing to collaborate with us on this project. Again, I think it's ultimately just better serving our larger community, so thank you.
Well done.
Yes, exactly.
Appreciate it.
I saw this in the packet, and I thought for sure we'd get to the meeting, there'd be a cat, because there wasn't a cat.
I was waiting for a chair to pop in. Big hump me to brief me, and I'm like, why, just do it, yes.
Thank you very much.
Can I just say one thing? As many of you know, it's a tough time within the Police Department. But, you know, I've been working for this community for 23 years. I've known Chief Bullock for over 20 years now. And I'm very proud to stand up here and say that I stand next to that man, I know ethically, I know he works very hard for this community, and there's no one else I would want to see leading this organization forward. So, just wanted to make a question about that.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thanks a lot.
Before we move on to the First Selectman Report, I wanted to see if there's, be a motion after this meeting to add an agenda item to adjourn to executive session to discuss the police chief's performance.
Sumoat.
Are there any further conversations? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll add that to the agenda.
Can we table your report?
Want to?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, just kidding.
No, he's not.
Really, he's not. I just have a few items I'll highlight from my report. The school's facilities master plan, so our school district is in the process of completing a facilities study. There was a forum on November 20th where the architect presented a summary of the work to date, and they shared two options that would involve reconfiguring our current school setup. The community learned at the forum that among those, the reasons behind this project are aging school buildings and a growing school age population, especially at the elementary level. The 40-minute presentation was followed by a public comment, which, much of which centered on the possible repurposing of Terrifil School. I know that speaking publicly at such a meeting is not an easy thing to do, and I'm very appreciative of everyone who stood up to share their experiences and perspectives. Following that forum, some of the next steps will include further developing additional school options and organizing a public forum to gather input on those options. In the report that's sent out, I've got links to all of the Board of Ed material. And I do want to emphasize that this process is being driven by the Board of Ed, and the Board of Selectmen really plays a formal role at the end of the process in approving the capital project. The Board of Selectmen has asked the Public Safety Subcommittee to work on an ordinance that would address the intentional feeding of certain kinds of wildlife. We're currently looking at draft ordinances from other towns. And the next meeting of the workgroup I wanted to share is scheduled for December 6 at 8:00 a.m. in the main meeting room of Town Hall, and the public is welcome to attend. There's more context on the issue. I linked to a current article in my, in the report we'll be emailing out. Sensory-friendly Santa, so children with disabilities and their families are invited to attend a free sensory-friendly Santa event at Eno Memorial Hall. That's from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., also on December 6. It'll include a picture session, crafts, and refreshments. And this year's event is sponsored by the Simsbury Aging and Disability Commission, Simsbury Social Services.
Don't forget the really cool elf.
I'll come just to see that.
Chris Kelly, you're calling Chris Kelly.
Finally, I found a purpose.
And the Simsbury Public Library.
It's my last meeting, I gotta write in the first-line report.
He's an angry little one, isn't he?
SCTV viewership should be up because of this show.
And that, I'll turn it over to Maria at this point, for the town manager.
Thank you. So, just a few save the dates. Monday, December 2, after the, thank you, after the Thanksgiving holiday at 6:00 p.m., we will have your swearing-in ceremony. The public is welcome to attend, and we will have a brief meeting following the swearing-in ceremony. The tri-board budget meeting with the Board of Ed and Board of Finance is scheduled for December 3. That's at 5:45 p.m. in the Terrifil Room. That's our brand-new program room at the Simsbury Public Library. And I also have a note here for acknowledgement of service. Some of you may know, but Tom Heran, his last day as member of the zoning Board of Appeals was Wednesday, and he decided not to run for reelection. But he served the ZBA for just under 30 years, which is really quite incredible. He currently serves as their secretary. I know his insight and presence will be missed by that board. So, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize 30 years of public service from Tom on the For our departmental news and notes, we do have a number of appointments that I'll work through this evening, a number of promotions, as well as new hires. I would like to thank Tom Fitzgerald and our office. He has taken over doing a majority of our recruitment work and has just been doing a really terrific job with that. And I know the leadership team has been very happy with his work, so he helped us move through a number of these recruitments. But in the assessor's office, great news to report, and I would hope that you would join me and our finance director, Amy, and our assessor, Francine, in congratulating Jennifer Russo on her promotion to Assistant Assessor. That happened a little bit earlier this month. She joined the town in October of 2013. She initially started out in the tax collector's office. She then transferred to the assessor's office and is now being promoted to the Assistant Assessor position. She has a degree in- She has a degree in finance. She is certified as a municipal tax collector, and she is one course away from completing her certification as a municipal assessor. That's an incredibly valuable resource to this community, somebody who understands both the tax piece as well as assessment. It's just we're so fortunate to have her. She's done a really terrific job. So hopefully, next time you swing by the assessor's office, you'll say hello and congratulations to her. A note from engineering. Some of you may have seen that the hot brick landing at the Flower Bridge substantially now is complete. That park was reopened to the public on November 23rd. We do have a number of minor items that we'll need to complete in the spring and do plan to do a ribbon cutting in the spring and to, again, welcome the public to our new facility. From community and social services, some of you may know Wendy LaMontaña. She is going to be temporarily assisting the department during the holiday season. She's going to be helping with holiday programs. She is a former park and rec director. She has been actively volunteering at the senior center. We're really glad to have her on board to help us through the holiday season. So some of you may see her at the social services and senior center on a more regular basis over the next month or two. Also, for community and social services, at a recent Board of Selectman meeting, we did have an inquiry about how people could donate their time or money or items to our residents in need. So if folks want to help our neighbors with food, shelter, heat, utilities, et cetera, we have created an informational flyer. We will try to help distribute this. It is attached to the report this evening and would encourage folks to reach out to our social services department. From our police department, Kelsey Chamberlain has accepted the position and has been appointed to the position of Administrative Secretary to our police chief. She will begin work in the next few weeks. She has most recently worked as a pension analyst. She has over 10 years of administrative experience, working as a legal assistant, doing accounts payable, et cetera. She holds a bachelor's degree in mathematics from Westfield State University, and we want to welcome Kelsey. For public works, on Saturday evening, Tom Roy and I attended the Connecticut Association of Street and Highway Officials Award Ceremony. As you may recall, our highway department was being recognized with the 2019 Distinguished Service Award. I did bring it. Thank you. It was a really terrific ceremony. I was so proud of Tom and our highway team. Just really great that their hard work was recognized by the professional association. So again, kudos to our team. Job well done.
Well, it's well made.
Yeah. Also, from public works, we have a couple of appointments as well. Jerome Grant was recently promoted to the position of Operator One at the WPCA. Some of you may probably recognize Jerome. He has been a second shift custodian, so oftentimes he's in our building during our meetings. He is so genuinely excited about this promotional opportunity. We're really happy for him as he continues to grow and develop with the department. So kudos to Jerome. And another appointment from public works. Ray Harris has accepted the position of Project Administrator. That position works with the administrative function at our public works department, supporting the larger department. A lot of project administration and construction management work there. He comes to us with the background in construction and project management. We believe he's going to be a great addition to our team. He has a degree from Mercyhurst University in geology. He's most recently worked as an owner's representative and previously as a project manager for Colliers. And again, we are really happy to welcome him on December 2nd. And just a quick reminder for our special event, Simsbury Celebrates is this Saturday evening from 5:00 to 8:30 p.m. And we do have the road closure notice for Hot Meadow. Great, thank you.
Lots going on.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Moving on to selectman action. Tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective November 25th, 2019, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $1,523.67 and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Item B is the Federal Fiscal Year 2019 State Homeland Security Grant Program. This program provides funding for emergency preparedness and response activities. And in your packet is an MOU. And by approving the MOU, it makes Simsbury eligible for a portion of these funds that will eventually be distributed to municipalities. Were there any questions on this one? Is there a motion effective November 25th, 2019, to approve the Federal Fiscal Year 2019 State Homeland Security Grant Program memorandum of agreement, which makes the town of Simsbury eligible for regional allocations made through the Region III Regional Emergency Planning Team? And further, to approve the attached resolution that authorizes the town manager to execute all documents related to the grant award?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item C is proposed acceptance of the Greater Hartford Transit District Dial-A-Ride Assistance Grant. The town contracts with the Greater Hartford Transit District for assistance with funding the operating costs for our Dial-A-Ride program. And the Greater Hartford Transit District serves as a pass-through for the funding, which comes from the state. And the anticipated award is a little over $6,600. Are there any questions on this item? Is there a motion effective November 25th, 2019, to accept the fiscal year 1920 grant funds from the Greater Hartford Transit District to support our Dial-A-Ride program and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the grant award?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Item D is, in your packets, is a draft of the Economic Development Commission's work plan. The draft was developed with input from this board, the EDC, town staff, and some of these items came out of our goal-setting session held over the past, I guess, two weekends ago. Currently on the work plan, there's seven items, and I wanted to get input tonight with the hope of adopting a version of this work plan tonight. Is there feedback on any of the items here? None of these should be new.
They all look like the things we talked about at our goal-setting meeting and, you know, other than filling in some of the staffing, the tasks look to be in line with what we talked about.
One thing I'll highlight under business outreach is there was a thought that the EDC could be helpful in a larger project to revamp the wayfinding signage in key parts of town. And I think it was staff suggestion that they may be able to help in particular with gathering business feedback on that particular part of the project. So that's what's in here.
Makes sense.
Okay, any other feedback? Okay. Is there a motion effective November 25th, 2019, to adopt the Economic Development Commission 2019-2020 work plan as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Budget Status Report as of September 30th, and Amy Meriwether.
The highlight of the evening. Here we go.
She's got a tough act to follow with the radios.
I know, I don't have that good news. So we're only in the first quarter, so not a ton to share, but there are a few things I wanted to go over. For the general fund, the revenues are at 50% of budget. This is consistent with prior year and with expectations, given that we have our major collection in July and then our next major collection in January. Our expenditures for the general fund are at 25% of budget, in line with where they should be at this time of year. So nothing major there. Moving on to the Simsbury Farms Fund. You'll see that as of September 30th, we had a surplus in this fund of $268,619. The majority of this is the deferred revenue, the accounting change that we made at the end of the last fiscal year, so that revenue was put into this year. If you take out that deferred revenue, we're at a surplus of $1,365. And as you can see, compared to the same time last year, we're up $200,000. The same time last year, we were in the hole, $205,211. So the majority of this increase relates to the golf course. As you can see, under the total golf course revenue, we are up $119,000. And then we increased our general fund contribution into the fund by $80,000. So that's the majority of your $200,000.
Good job, Peterson.
You must have played a lot of golf.
A lot of golf.
Mr. Mini Golf, we're going to call you.
Moving on to the health insurance funds, we had a net change in fund balance of an increase of $1.2 million. Our reserve right now stands at $3.5 million, and that is actually right in the target range of where we want to be. We want to be anywhere between $2.9 and $3.7 million, or 20% to 25% of expected claims. So given where this fund was and where it is now is absolutely amazing, and we are fully solvent, we are fully funded, and we're right where we need to be.
Actually, don't.
Much better news.
See, I had some good news.
That one's not exciting for the public, but we liked that one.
Considering what we went through last year, that's very good news.
The sewer use fund, right now we're showing a net change increase in fund balance of $2.5 million. However, the majority of this relates to the assessments. We're about 84% collected on our assessment revenue. So as the year goes on, that number will go down. I believe that is all I have for highlights, unless somebody else has any questions.
Just any line items? I mean, I know it's early. Any line items you're concerned about?
Not concerned about, but we do know our legal is going to go over. Other than that, no.
Not surprising. Go on.
Any other questions? Okay. Amy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
And for item F, Maria's going to step away. In your packets is a summary of the town manager's performance review. It's the responsibility of this board to conduct the annual review. There are, just for the public's knowledge, there are six attributes where she's evaluated, including financial management, organizational management and leadership, professional development, Board of Selectmen goals, communication and economic development. On each attribute, she was either at or above expectations. If we accept this performance review tonight, we would also increase the town manager's salary in line with the raises that we've given to the other non-union staff. Are there any questions on this? Is there a motion?
Sean. Just make one point. This is separated from the other raises, but it should be emphasized that we're treating all unaffiliated staff, town manager and the rest of the team exactly the same with this. So there's no special treatment for any employee on the unaffiliated side. There's been some discussion around the building and the community that this is extraordinary or extracurricular, et cetera, et cetera. Couldn't be further from the truth. This is consistent with past practice that we treat all of the employees at the unaffiliated level the same. The town manager has the right to distribute that salary, as did the first select person, for the other unaffiliated positions how they see fit. And the town manager has consistently followed past practice of equality through the ranks. So if folks are confused by this, yes, it is different timing, but not inappropriate and not out of line with the rest of the unaffiliated positions.
Thanks, Sean. Is there a motion effective November 25th, 2019, to accept the town manager's performance review summary and further retroactive to July 1, 2019? Is there a motion that the town manager's salary be increased by 2.35%, consistent with the performance review process stipulated in the town manager's contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Finally, appointments and resignations.
Welcome back.
Item A is the designation of roles for members of the Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook Wild and Scenic Management Committee. So this board, earlier this year, appointed three people to that committee. We got new information from the Park Service that only one person could be primary and the other two are alternates. All three can participate, but only one person gets a vote. So the recommendation of the Personnel Subcommittee was that person should be Sally Rieger, who played a role more than a decade in really bringing this process to fruition. So is there a motion effective November 25th, 2019, to appoint Sally Rieger as the official Simsbury representative to the Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook Wild and Scenic Management Committee? And also to appoint Stephen McDonnell and Mike Ryan as Simsbury alternates to the lower, I have to read this twice, the Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook Wild and Scenic Management Committee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
It's still shorter than the name of our new park.
Item B is appointments to the Short Term Rental Ordinance Work Group. So when we form the work group, we ask the zoning commission and economic development commission for members for that work group. Is there a motion effective November 25th, 2019, to accept the recommended members for the Short Term Rental Ordinance Work Group, Ron Jodis, Economic Development Commission, and Bruce Elliott from the zoning commission?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item C, is there a motion to accept the resignation of Joy Hemelfarb as a regular member of the Aging and Disability Commission, retroactive to November 15th, 2019?
So moved, with our thanks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item D, is there a motion to accept the resignation of Dennis Fallon as a regular member of the Culture Parks and Rec Commission, effective December 6th, 2019?
So moved.
With our thanks. Second from you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Review of the minutes. Any feedback on the minutes from our regular meeting, November 13th, or the special meeting on November 16th?
There's one little correction. I don't know what page this is. But under regular meeting of October 28th, it says Mrs. Cook said the sensory-friendly Santa, and it's a sensory-friendly Santa.
Look at that. Right to the end.
Well, he's so good catchings.
Well, the elf.
Then we'll make that one change. Any liaison or subcommittee reports?
Cheryl.
You know. Just before I leave. At Simsbury Celebrates, wonderful community event, which is happening this Saturday. The committee for the 350th anniversary of the town of Simsbury will be there with its first preview of swag available to the general public. This here is a canvas bag available for sale. There is a hat.
Ooh, nice.
There are these very cool double insulated, double walled water bottles. And these nice bags, which this is what it looks like folded up, but you can easily carry it in a small parcel with you. It's very handy wherever you go. So look for the table in front of Eno Hall throughout the celebration on Saturday. These items will also be for sale on the website, simsberry350.com. And I don't think you can order them quite yet, but you will be able to. We would love for people to participate by donating $35. Get it, $35. And with your donation, you'll get this lovely sticker for your car. So I would encourage you to get in the spirit and participate and celebrate Simsbury's 350th anniversary.
How much do you have to donate for the water bottle? How much is for the water bottle?
$20. But the proceeds go to the fund. So the idea is to provide all of the events for the 350th celebration free of charge to the public. We are working very hard to raise the money, gather sponsors, and do that so that everybody can enjoy all of the events together.